Board of Education for June 28, 2022 is called to order. April, would you please call a roll?
Ms. Byer, here. Mr. Boswell?
Present.
Mrs. Danick, here. Mrs. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Present.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Is excused.
Dr. Ronger?
Here.
The Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted and available at the main entrance of the room. Next, we have the 2022-23 preliminary budget presentation. Dr. Standish.
Yes, Mrs. Danick, did you want to do any opening comments?
I wanted to just make one or two. First, I want to thank the finance area of our LPSDO for doing such diligent work with our board to get this ready for the presentation. And because I know we have a couple here, I'm proud to tell our wrestling fans that we did put wrestling in here, so it's not a surprise. You'll see it in the budget. And also bowling, just in case they're watching it on TV. They've been strong advocates for their sports, and I want them to know we heard them. And with that, I will turn it over to you for the full presentation.
Great. I'm Liz Standish, Associate Superintendent for Business Affairs, and I'm happy to be with you tonight to present the work of many people. So I want to recognize Kim Schmidt, who is our Director of Budget and Finance, so she'll be here to help answer questions. We also have Doug Anderson, who's our Budget Specialist. So he does a lot of the work directly with schools, with Dr. Larson on the actual staffing. We have Jess Jefferson, who is our new Director of Accounting and Payroll, and so she's here, along with Kelly Ackerman, who is our very quickly outgoing Director of Accounting and Payrolls. So I get the privilege of presenting the work, but it's an amazing team that puts this all together. Tonight, we'll look at just our process, our calendar, the overview of the budget, some of the guiding conversations we had both with the Finance Committee and with individual board members. And we have a preliminary general fund budget for consideration for the community, and we have a preliminary general fund revenue projection budget for consideration for the community. And we'll be happy to answer any board member questions or discussions or topics we want to address. It's very important to recognize that our budget calendar comes to the board clear back in February for a reason. We want to make sure everybody understands there's a nice, long, transparent runway where we receive information about revenue, we work with schools, we gather information, and that's all working up until tonight, where there's this first preliminary look at the budget the board is considering for adoption in the fall. We then have the opportunity to go out into the community to have conversations, to gather their thoughts and input about the budget. We have two forums planned. One is a virtual forum that is at noon on June 30, and then we have an evening in-person forum, which is a meeting of the Board of Education that evening at 5:00. And so we will look forward to having community members join us with their comments and thoughts about the budget we're about ready to present. And as you know, we're happy to present the budget anywhere, anytime. So any community request, any group who would like to have a budget presentation, we stand ready to offer that to the community so that we can gather a lot of input when we start what's actually the statutorily required portion of the budget adoption. So all of this work we're doing early summer is something and a culture the Board of Education has basically established to communicate with the community. The statutorily required hearings will occur later on when you look into September. So we have a long way in front of us, but we have a lot of work to present to you tonight. And this is just a picture of the work that goes on year-round. We work with student enrollment. That's a key driver to our budget. That has to do with both how we generate revenue and how we build budgets, because that's what drives our staffing model. We have negotiations with employees, staffing conference, and receive data all along the way. We get revenue information normally beginning in March and April related to state aid and property taxes. We work with the Finance Committee. We have board one-on-ones, and we gather all of that information to put together this presentation for this evening. And we will work here through the summer months to bring forward in July, at the July 26 work session, that will be the full picture of the district budget. So tonight, we're going to really focus on what the changes are in the general fund budget. That's traditionally what we do as a school system. Those are where the programs and the different initiatives that the community would really have voices about can be found, and so that's where we have that conversation. And then we'll move into September for formal adoption. So it really is a year-round process, so this team works hard all year-round, but this is our season. The Finance Committee always sets the stage that our strategic plan is one of the driving forces as we talk about decisions, conversations, budget adjustments we want to make. So here's the current pillars for the LPS strategic plan. We also know that the board is very interested in embracing diversity, equity, and inclusion in Lincoln Public Schools and advancing that work. So that is part of our budget conversations as well. One thing we've managed the last couple of years is we've managed through quite a bit of uncertainty, and maybe some of the uncertainty around the pandemic has settled down, but we're really navigating quite a bit of volatility right now. That volatility can have everything to do with the economic conditions, both here at home, in the nation, and worldwide. Specifically, one that impacts us a lot in the school system, since 90% of our budget is staff, would be the labor market and some of the challenges in the labor market with hiring and wage increases. And so an investment in our current staff is part of this budget proposal. We're also watching student enrollment. We know the pandemic had an impact on our enrollment. We're kind of in a wait-and-see what the future brings. We also know that there's likely going to be some impact on our births in Lincoln, which will create some volatility in the budget even five years from now. So those are all demographic figures that we keep track of, and we watch very closely. We also keep a good eye on the legislature. There were not any changes to state aid this last year, but there were legislative proposals related to tax cuts. So that's something we keep an eye on, along with our property value projections and looking at our revenue forecast. So one of the most important tools we use to manage through volatility and uncertainty is our cash flow. And so our last three years is really a good example of how to manage cash flow when you have dramatic swings in revenue. And so we use a three-year model. Every budget is built, and then it is sustained for three years, and we make assumptions. The Finance Committee does that work, and we're using cash flow from year to year with the goal to ensure programming and staffing over time. All of you as board members are very passionate about that we don't want to be changing things for families dramatically. We also don't want to be changing things for staff circumstances dramatically. So as a large school system, using cash flow and being purposeful in what we do serves us very well. Diving a little bit into our enrollment, this gives you a 20-year look back of enrollment. You can see the pre-K-12 enrollment and the growth, the steady, strong growth that Lincoln has historically experienced. We did have a decline in that enrollment in 2020, 2021, and then '21, '22, that enrollment increased. We are looking at enrollment every week. Dr. Larson, as a part of his role, looks at enrollment and kindergarten enrollment specifically every week. And I will share with you, 2020, the big impact was some families made the decision maybe not to send their child to kindergarten this year and wait till next year. So that's really what fostered that decline and then that growth. When we look at our cohort enrollment, so this is students currently in our system, you can see that we have cohorts that have over 3,000 students, maybe up to 3,100 students in our high school settings and our middle school settings, but that is followed with, especially if you look at grades two, three, and four, that are slightly below 3,000. Keep in mind, the first grade in the kindergarten enrollment shifted a little bit. You have some of those kindergartners who maybe would have come in first grade leveled that out a little bit, but it's really if you're looking at that trend of second, third, and fourth grade, if that trend were to continue and if we did not have new families moving to Lincoln. So we know Lincoln has been a city who has had net migration through immigration, through refugee resettlement, through families moving here for jobs. I know when I started with the school district in 2013, the big thing we saw was families moving here from other states for a period of time. Lincoln did very well through the recession and kept a lot of networks in place for families, and so people knew people and moved to Lincoln. So we just don't know what the future is going to hold as far as enrollment. We do know that live births have been on the decline, both in Lincoln, the City of Lincoln, and Lancaster County. 2020 saw a little bit of an uptick, which is great news. We fully expect 2021 to be a low number. We would expect that to go down. The national trends, national studies have said as much as 10%, which would be a big shift. I would tend to think that Lincoln's a little bit insulated from that dramatic of a swing. We tend to be more insulated than the rest of the nation as far as trends go. So we have to build a budget based on what we know, and what we know are the students that are in our system. So when we look at our cohort enrollment and take into account the birth information, that would lead you to a projection of 196 less students than we served last year. But what we do know, and I'm going to ask Dr. Larson just to speak on just for a few minutes, is we are experiencing families moving to Lincoln, and every family that moves to Lincoln will decrease that loss or increase the enrollment overall. So Dr. Larson, just a few comments from your perspective as monitoring this.
It's very early to predict what final enrollment will look like. A lot of things could happen, and I think there are two primary factors that will indicate where we end up. One is kindergarten enrollment. We still have a number of kindergarten students who need to enroll, and sometimes you just, parents don't enroll until August rolls around and the time is in front of us. So if we were to hit the projected number of kindergarten students for fall, that decline of 196 might be significantly smaller than that. The other factor that would make a difference would be not only families moving to Lincoln, but the number of refugee students we might have. For example, in this past school year, we didn't anticipate it. We had over 130 students enroll in our system from Afghanistan. So that could continue, and of course, there could be students who would ultimately enroll from the Ukraine. So there are a wide variety of things that'll impact final enrollment numbers.
So in the forecast model, our goal is to always focus on stability and sustainability for the school system. So we use the current enrollment numbers as our guide. So in our forecast, we do account for the decrease of students. And then what will happen is as enrollment comes in this fall, we will then update that forecast, and that picture will change if enrollment comes in either flat or a slight increase or a slight decrease for the next forecast we build for the next year's budget. So having that long runway has served us well. We experienced a 23% drop. Many of you will remember, we had state aid around 146 million. It dropped down to 112 over two years. So as we experienced that drop, we were also faced with some more minor declining enrollments due to the pandemic, whether it be motor vehicle sales or county fines and licenses with the courts being closed. So we really, at that time, made the decision to go into flat budgets for two consecutive years, and that was hard work. We did reduce the budget 11 million the first year, about 90-plus full-time FTE. Now, keep in mind, this was predominantly done through attrition. So we did not go through a reduction in force process. That's something the board has wanted us to manage over time to make sure that we are sustaining people and not going through that process. And then the second year, we reduced the budget again for a total of about 5% over two years. And those reductions were necessary to make room for salary and benefit growth, so we had to reduce some of our operational items in order to make room for salary and benefit growth to hold the budget flat those two years. You will see that through that work, we are able to present a modest growth budget this year, about 5.8%. Some of that will include the focus on investments in salary and benefits, investments required for opening new schools, and then we are going to look to restore some of those reductions we made during those two years where we really constrained the budget growth. When we develop our budget, we go through line item detail. I think it might surprise people, the level of fine-tuned detail that this team goes through reconciling even pieces and parts of an FTE. And when we look at that, the biggest thing that we analyze is that salary and benefit cost from year to year, and then the staffing costs. So February and March, we have staffing conferences. Dr. Weber and Dr. Larson work through with every principal, and then department meetings with Dr. Larson and the Budget Office, and we work through and fine-tune the budget needs, whether it's a change that is requesting an increase or a decrease in the budget, and really ask every principal and every department head to really look thoughtfully at their budget. So this really just gives you the numbers on what I've been describing, where in 2019, 2020, the approach that we took going into 2020, 2021, and then '21, '22, which is the school year we just completed, we are able to do the modest growth. If you pace that out, it's about 2.3% per year if you were to spread the 5.8 out. So really, just looking forward to make sure that we were in the position we're in today to present this budget to you. So the budget for '22, '23, here's some of the assumptions. The big first assumption we make is what are the salary and benefit costs going to do? The negotiated agreement with our teachers is the first primary tool we use. That's usually the first group where negotiations are complete. So we estimate that salary and benefits are going to grow to 4.11. We then look at valuation. This budget is estimating that valuation will go 3.4, and we'll talk about that. This budget proposes a general fund levy of $1.05. State aid was certified to us at 114.5 million, and this does assume that enrollment declined, but as Dr. Larson and I shared, that doesn't mean we genuinely believe enrollment is going to decline that much. That's just the data we have today, and we continue to monitor the data every week. The general fund increase is about 27 million, and then the general fund percent increase, as I previously shared, was 5.8 million. This negotiations amount includes the 4.11 to support the contract that's been approved with LEA. It also includes cost estimates for some of the other groups that you're considering, you know, and the different groups that you have on the agenda tonight. Knowing that those are hourly employees and the labor pressure there is extremely hard for us, there are some percentages that are above the 4.11, and so we do have estimates to make sure that's accounted for in our $18.6 million increase in the budget to support negotiated salary and benefit increases. Then, as you all know, we run the budget system, and part of running the budget system is to pull out retirees. We then fill those positions with like an average new staff member salary, and through that, you get savings. And so we then take that savings into account as we're building the budget of almost $2 million. We did a big focus on school staffing. The total required school staffing for the new schools was about $3.7 million. We did add new money into the staffing formula that goes out to the schools of almost $3 million. So we talk about how when we open new schools, students come from existing schools, and so you have staff who comes from existing schools, but they don't travel in a perfect classroom set of 25 from one school to the other, so we can move Liz from this classroom at this school to this classroom at this school. It doesn't work that perfectly. We also do receive some state funding to support opening new schools. So working with Dr. Larson and looking at the points, and Doug Anderson is very involved in this, we did add additional funding to the formula to help offset the impact of the opening new schools. For example, the high schools that have students that are going to Lincoln Northwest. Those schools are losing some resources because there are students moving to Northwest, but we wanted to make sure we can maintain staffing levels at all of our schools. So there was an investment there in new schools. We also know that we decreased supply budgets during the budget reductions two years ago. We actually decreased overall supply budgets by about $220,000. So we restored that decrease, and then we increased it just a bit, knowing that the supply budgets are now spreading across more schools. That's something that's distributed through student enrollment and a formula in the fall. So we are trying to help schools maintain their purchasing power in an inflationary environment and wanted to restore that reduction. When you look at our new schools, you also have budgets that occur here at the departments. So the school budget is made up both of the staffing points model, where the principal is working and defining what their staff picture works, looks like with both HR and Dr. Larson, and then the departments are also saying, okay, and here's the staff we're going to send from the district department. So in addition to the school staffing, we also have district staffing in curriculum. So you can see some of our itinerant staff, total of one FTE to support Ada Robinson and supplies for that group. We have the office staff, which comes from the district funding. We do have early childhood planned for Robinson Elementary School. This would be one classroom serving both an AM and a PM section, so we know that. Special education and student services. So all of those are critical features when we're putting together a school budget to make sure that we're building out the staffing plan for that school. In addition, we have operations staff, so custodians related to maintaining the beautiful new building. Similar approach at Northwest, though just larger. We have staff from curriculum. We have the office staff, so you can see the investments in each of those categories. We are also planning to have an early childhood classroom at Lincoln Northwest with an AM and a PM session, so that will serve students in that area. And then computing services has a model of service that they have prime locations in the high schools, and it is a contracted service with the ESU, but this is putting in place the technician services at the new high schools as well to help with their region or their area as we take on more schools. We have special education staff at Northwest and student services, which would predominantly be our health office staff. And once again, we have our operations staff or our custodial team for a Northwest kind of district department total. And then Standing Bear, we're working on the planning year for Standing Bear. So there's a startup budget related to Standing Bear and bringing on the leadership team, providing funding for teachers to work together next summer to really jump-start that school year. And the supplies, textbooks is a big number, but that is getting everything we need to get that building up and running, and that number would have been a similar number that you're going to see for Lincoln Northwest this past year, and then also the investing, beginning the investment for the computing services network. We also know that we have custodial staff that'll be coming on board next summer, next spring, to help get Standing Bear up and running, so we're beginning to put that in place. And I think it's also important to note that we're bringing on with Standing Bear and Ada Robinson over 300,000 square feet of additional footprint of facility to maintain throughout the school district. So we do have increased FTE related to electrical, HVAC grounds. Think about all the acres we're bringing on with the activities and athletics complex and some additional hours for custodial. The increase in utilities there, I don't think would necessarily surprise anybody. We have had an increase in utilities cost related to new schools. We then have the benefit of saying, okay, but what budgets did we close out? We did close out the Northwest startup supply budgets. You'll notice that's very comparable to the Standing Bear, the Ada Robinson, and the teacher workshops. So we're able to reduce and remove those startup budgets as we're transitioning that school to an operations budget. So now we're going to talk a little bit about a concept I mentioned earlier, which is during the two years that we reduced the budget to hold it flat to make room for salary and benefit increases, we went to some one-time reductions. So we went to some areas as far away from the classroom as possible. That was the desire of the board, with some one-time reductions where we could put plans in place to restore those reductions when we could. And we are proposing that in this budget, we increase the funding for the class plan or the district technology plan by $321,350. And if I can, the actual need there is double that. It's about $642,000. This would be the first place staff would like to look if our valuation comes in higher than we estimate, to go ahead and restore this budget line to where it needs to be to sustain our lifecycle. The 642 is what is needed to sustain the lifecycle in the future for the K-12 devices. Otherwise, we'll be in catch-up mode, and if we're not able to increase that budget over time, we would then be having to have tough conversations about what grade levels we would not have the technology, and that would compromise our ability with our digital curriculum to serve students at those grade levels. So we can do it in phases if needed. We could do a phase this year and a phase next year. If we are able to restore it all this year, that just means we're not playing catch-up in the future years. There was a reorganization within our computing services department, and that resulted in some savings. Curriculum, same thing. We went to curriculum as a place for some one-time reductions. We need to restore that reduction. The total reduction for curriculum was about $432,000. And so this is what is needed for curriculum to get their cycle back. So we always, we ask department leaders all the time. Kakka Olson did a great job. We all worked together and looked at the lifecycle and what we could do on what was needed to get us back where we needed, and this is, this would cover that amount. Early childhood, we had increased cost related to transportation. Keep in mind, we did increase our labor costs there significantly this last year, and also we have the fuel impact related to early childhood. And then we did not qualify for a continuation grant from one of our startup kindergarten classrooms that was funded by the state, so that does now come to the school district. And in our special education department, they're reducing a coordinator position. This would be vacant, so this would be through attrition. Library services, there's a reduction for the contract with the ESU. And then in student services, there is the increase of a coordinator to a director, but then the continued shift, we've been working on this for a number of years now, to focus on school nurses. And so removing FTE that's dedicated to treatment nurses and health technicians that are vacant, and then putting those FTE and that energy into how many nurses can we realistically hire that next year to increase the nursing staff in our schools. Security, we had the board ask the very thoughtful question of, is there anything related to security we should be considering in this budget? And in conversations with Joe Wright, his highest priority that he thought we should continue to invest in is threat assessment. And so we are requesting an additional social worker to join the threat assessment team just based on caseload. That's very, very, very important preventative work in working with youth and families. We have English language learner, Team Stipend, for adding another bilingual liaison, and so some work in that area as well. For activities and athletics, this budget, as Mrs. Danick said, does propose to fund the addition of wrestling and bowling to our schools, and then it also funds the investments needed for Lincoln Northwest. I know we had some questions related to things like intramurals for Northwest. What does that fund? That's actually the coverage for the weight room before and after school, so that pays staff for that. We, I'm going to ask John Neal to maybe weigh in both on this will fund the addition of wrestling and bowling as far as creating the budget structure for it, and then also, if you could share, we were asked for the data on participation in NSAA sports and activities.
Sure. Just briefly, this will cover the addition of what looks to be varsity, boys and girls at each of our high schools, as well as adding girls wrestling. It'll add girls wrestling in the proposed structure of adding one new coach to each wrestling team, so it will have, similar to swimming, a head coach and then the two assistants. So it'll have a similar structure and allow participation across those activities. For the general participation, we looked at participation across all activities. So when you look at NSAA activities, it's about 30%. Traditionally, 30% each year of our students participate in NSA activities, and that's individual. Some of our students participate in multiple activities. So this is looking at individual students. This last year, it was a little bit lower, 27%, as overall participation was lower. When you add in clubs, CTSO, like in, like HOSA, FBLA, DECA, those other experiences that are not NSAA, where about 67% of our students participate in some organized activity with an adult staff member as a supervisor at our schools through clubs, activities, athletics, and CLCs.
Great. And we know participation is a great thing, and we want students to participate in school, and that leads to higher graduation rates very often. Activities and athletics, I want to talk about the CIF acronym on there. That is the Central Interscholastic Athletic Fund, and so that is a fund within the district where like gate receipts or admissions revenue gets deposited and things like equipment and different funding to support sports. So with the addition of the new sports, there is a transfer to the athletic fund to support bowling and wrestling. We've also not raised the rate for event staff and officials for a long time, and just like every other factor in the labor market, those are getting harder and harder to fill, so the transfer also will help support a little bit of a pay increase for those positions that help make sure we can have contests and experience for students. And then the fund itself was able to support about half a million in the cost of equipping Lincoln Northwest and will be support, able to support about half a million of the cost of funding Standing Bear, and that's great news. That speaks volumes to our leadership in athletics and their work in That speaks volumes to our leadership in athletics and their work in planning for that. Very similarly happens with our Nutrition Services Fund, where that team works to then have funds available when new schools onboard to offset the burden on the general fund. We are supplementing that startup cost equipment of about $100,000, but the majority of it was paid for within the athletic fund. So that gives you a look at athletics and activities. Out of our facility and maintenance, under the leadership of Scott Wieskamp, we do have open custodial positions, so we're going to remove one of those open custodial positions. And we have to increase the contracted service repairs line. That was another one-time place that we looked to make reductions last year. We actually reduced it about double this. The reduction was, you know, 800, what, 62,000? And then we do need to increase utilities. So utilities costs have risen, and I think everybody understands that. So we have trending that we do where we make recommendations to the board to keep up with that and increase our utilities. And then very similarly in transportation, we have additional routes. Those will be presented tonight as a part of the transportation plan, and we do have diesel and gas costs that are rising. So there is an increased request for transportation. And every year, we receive our insurance premiums, usually more in the August timeline. And so that's something where we always go a year in the rears. So this is catching up to the insurance premium increase from last August, and then we will see what the premium comes in this year and include that in next year's budget. We actually do a transfer to the uninsured loss fund to offset any change so that we don't get behind, and that's a new process we've put in place. So overall, what I'm presenting to you tonight is a $489.8 million general fund budget that's increasing from 462. And you can see the change in personnel is not much at all. So still 88, 89% of our costs are related to staff and personnel, and that is something that happens continually year after year because that is the primary focus of our bu, of our business. So I'm going to move on and keep moving to revenue, and then we can circle back. I see board members are making notes of their questions on their notes slide, and we'll come back to those. So Nebraska schools are funded 56% from property taxes, 36% from state aid. And in Lincoln, we're a little bit higher than that. That's because our valuation growth has been very strong. I would also say that as our student enrollment growth maybe leveled off a bit, that shifted the state aid portion down, and so we're now 60% and 23%. So the reason for that is the state aid formula first looks to define a school district needs, which is driven by student variables and historic spending. The first funding source it expects a district to use is its property tax base. And so if you can cover all of your needs from your property tax base, you do not get what is called equalization aid. So as that valuation goes up, if your needs are not skyrocketing, like our needs were skyrocketing for a while when we were growing 1,100 students a year, then your offset is going to be the reduction in state aid. So that's part of what we've experienced in these last few years is the reduction in state aid. I talked about the 23% drop over two years that we navigated and required us to use some cash flow, which we since have budgeted back, which is good long-range planning to help navigate that. So this gives you just a picture of the proportions. You can see, looking back, we are currently about 60% funded from property taxes and 23% funded from state aid. I don't think it's a surprise to anyone at all that we got up closer to a third funded for state aid when we were experiencing the very rapid student growth. And so that's because our needs in the formula were driving up, and so the state aid was recognizing that. Valuation increases over the years also impact the picture. This year was not a full revaluation year. This was just a year where they looked to make sure we had statutory compliance with properties. So that's really a new growth number of 3.4%. And here's a look at the historic property tax levy. I always tell the story, and I think it's important to tell, that when I joined the district in 2013, a directive from the board was when you're establishing the finance plan for the 2014 bond, look at debt rolling off and try and keep it. Bring us ideas as to how we can keep the levy within the existing levy and not plan for a tax increase. That was the same directive in 2020. So very purposeful from the board to keep an eye on property taxes, and that has resulted in the property tax levy going down over time. So as I discussed, this was not a full revaluation year. We are currently in the window where property owners can file protests, and so we take the preliminary data from the county, and we look at our historical averages related to protests, and we create an estimate to work from for the budget build for the summer months. We know for sure that the number, 3.4, the number we're using for valuation, will not exactly match the number that we get on August 20th. We hope it'll be as close as it's been in years past, but it will not exactly match. So our proposal for the board and the community consider is that if it is higher than we anticipated, we go to back to that technology plan line and try and shore that up to where we want it to be. If it's lower than projected, we believe the forecast can handle to draw some additional cash. If it's a large number off, then we can have discussions about whether we need to reduce one of those one-time things that we were restoring. We wouldn't have a necessary need right now to go back into the staffing plan for schools or departments. I think we have enough tools in the current budget proposal to manage any changes. So if you look at our four-year trend, you see the actual drop in overall revenue. So even though there's a balancer with the state equalization aid, at the end of the day in 2020, I mean, we did budget less revenue than the previous year. So it's, it's not that it was this one-for-one, we just switched from state aid to property taxes. The district did actually experience a decline in revenue, and that was part of what we had to navigate with our decrease and our increase and our management with cash flow. So part of that process included drawing down cash flow, 14-plus million in 2020, 2021, and then we added back 15 million in '21, '22. And so we're able to manage those swings, and this budget does propose to use about 2 million in cash flow, and we'll finalize that number in August after we hear the final numbers from the assessor. So when you look at the overall picture, you can see it's about 2.1 million, where we would be using cash as a revenue stream, so we would be planning to reduce our cash balance down slightly going into next year, but that can be funded over the three-year forecast. And that's the, the tool that we always use to see what we can do from cash from any given year. This is an estimate only. All of these levies will need to be recalculated once we receive our final valuation. We actually receive a different valuation for every bond series. So we get a certified valuation for the 2014 bond, for the 2020 bond, and so this is really just an estimate to give the community a picture of where the levy and the tax rate would be headed. The changes will be minor, tens of pennies, you know, not whole pennies, but it will be adjusted once we have the final valuation. So you could see, based on our plan we're presenting today, there would be a very slight decrease in the overall tax levy that the school district would be proposing predominantly in the bond fund, related to growing valuation would be the reason for that. So we're ranked about 226 out of 244 school districts in Nebraska for per pupil spending. We spend about $13,386 per pupil. The average is $14,495. And we always want to make sure we have a slide because there's often questions about, I didn't hear anything about the federal relief funding. That is a completely separate fund. That is federal funds. It's managed by our federal program staff, and as the community knows, there's been lots of community presentations over the past couple of years on this. The first authorization really focused on what we needed to do to support the shutdown, remote learning, and getting school open. The second authorization was a plan that's been presented publicly on acceleration of learning, summer school interventions. And the third authorization focuses on extending some of the plans from SIR II, but also further wrapping around even in the current school year. So there's a lot of focus on learning and advancing student learning in the SIR funds, and that is not something that we can just swap out general fund. And so that is one question, so we want to make sure we have that information here for the community. And once again, we're happy to present this information anytime, anywhere, and happy to facilitate that for the community. And I have an amazing team of people that this is really all their work. I just get to stand up here and present it to you. So I'm now ready for any questions or comments from board members. Mrs. Danik?
Okay, so I'm going to start with first, thank you for the recognition of adding to the bowling and the, both boys and girls bowling and the girls wrestling. I know that a parent and a student were sitting there, and as they walked out the door, you might not have been able to see them, but they turned around and said, "Thank you." So obviously, we listened, and we, I'm grateful that we were able to find the resources to do those two things for our students. There's a recognition that, that students do better when they're engaged in their school, not just in their academics, but engaged in athletics, activities, music. So this might be for Mr. Neal rather than, or Dr. Neal than for you, because when you gave the number of the 30%, that doesn't include students who have classes in music and art and drama, correct?
That's correct.
So we have a lot more kids involved in activities that don't show in that 30% number.
Right. They're involved in some way that they're well-connected to the school, but it doesn't reach outside the school day. Those numbers aren't reflected in the 67%, so that would be the lower number.
So the marching band is marching during the daytime, but they're still going to football games, and the, the drama kids are still doing their plays and performances outside of school hours?
If they do it outside, we collect it in the 67, but there's lots of students that are taking part in classes that aren't then connected outside, and those aren't collected in that number.
I just want parents to know that kids are being involved.
Absolutely.
So that's number one. The second is it's a reflection of their long-range planning, and to that, we owe a great thank you to your finance team. The long, long-range planning goes clear back to when we start to plan a new building, and we anticipate those ups and downs of opening the new schools and the supplies for the buildings. And that's another thank you to our community for understanding those swings. The third one is, can you talk a little bit about the early childhood at Northwest High School and why? Because I think that's a bit of a change of how we've done it in other places, and I don't want the community to think we're moving all of the early childhood to high schools.
We do have facility at Northwest specifically for early childhood, and I'll let Dr. Larson kind of weigh in on what we're able to offer there.
As you know, we have wait lists for our preschool program. When that building was designed, it was designed to have early childhood classrooms that could be used for one or two different purposes. We made the decision, due to the wait list in that part of our community, to open those two classrooms at Northwest and have preschool there. It will embed that school even more deeply in the community as you have young children and families going to Northwest in addition to high school students.
And will we still have early childhood at Arnold?
Yes, we will still have early childhood at Arnold.
I wanted parents to understand that's...
So this is in addition to the Northwest community.
Because this was a part of the city that was really underserved in early childhood, and the transportation costs, this is going to also save us on transportation costs because they live in the area, correct?
In that sense, yes.
Perfect. Let's see. I'm just making sure I got them all. I think that's it for right now. Thank you.
Any other questions? Barb, and then Bob?
In this presentation, I don't see the equity features of our budget explained. Could we, in the future, perhaps, go and have a report on those aspects of this budget that touch upon equity issues?
You bet. We absolutely can, because you're exactly right. There are decision points all along the way where the board shares with us, in order for equity, we need to invest in XYZ. And there's a number of those cer, of those instances in this budget that occurred. I think there's a big focus on equity even with the support for new schools, but then also the reinvestment in existing schools through the staffing points. So we didn't just shift all the resources from existing schools to new schools. Dr. Larson and his team really evaluated what would be the impact at the existing school, and the determination was made that we need to bolster the resources to help offset some of that impact. So when I think of where the most significant investment and decision points are made in this budget, that was probably one of the most significant ones that was really grounded in equity.
Yes, and I think that the community would like to know some of those other decision And we touched upon early childhood education. Are we still working towards improving our capacity and ability to go and offer full-day, full-year early childhood classrooms for those families who need that?
So from a facility perspective, we are increasing the capacity as far as when we're constructing new facilities. We're including that, once again, in equity decision in the construction of the new facilities, and I'll let Dr. Larson kind of talk in the plan, AM, PM versus full day.
It certainly remains our goal that ultimately we'd be able to have universal full-day preschool. At this point in time, we're working to expand facilities and classrooms. Next year, for example, it'll be four additional early childhood classrooms when you take those at Northwest and Robinson into account. We have to continuously add classrooms so that we can get towards that goal of full day, because every time we move to full day, we actually, in a sense, eliminate 20 classroom spots for students. We have to balance that against our need to serve students who have disabilities. So it remains our goal, when we can add facilities and rooms, we get closer to that goal.
Okay. And then my last question is that Lincoln has, Lincoln Public Schools is lucky that the emerging teacher shortage has not hit us very hard yet. But has the Finance Committee and has staff considered how we can go and prepare ourselves for that by going and bolstering our efforts with Grow Our Own? And I'm saying that specifically because I've met a number of wonderful students of ours that are very fired up to become teachers, but they often come from low-income minority backgrounds. And unless we start going and paying for student teachers, they can't go and student teacher. They can't afford it, and we're missing them. Because the best way to develop relationships is that student-teacher experience. So are we looking at going and doing something for stipends for student teachers?
So the way that would occur, and I'll have Dr. Weber weigh in here, that would be probably the Personnel Policy Committee that would, that would put that together, and then it would be a budget request to the Finance Committee, so I'll let Dr. Weber kind of speak to that.
Yeah, we have entered into a, an agreement with the University of Nebraska for special education, and it is a grant that will pay for stipends for our cooperating teachers, and then also pays for tuition for our students who are going into special education. Right now, that's probably about the extent of what we're looking at. Obviously, the, the funding is the, the main issue. A lot of larger cities and, and larger donor bases have foundations that are, are investing in those kinds of things, and, and if we could pursue something like that through our foundation, I mean, that, that would be the direction we would move. But we believe that this, this grant through the university is a, is a starting point, and it's gonna, it's gonna fund probably 25 to 30 cooperating teachers plus tuition reimbursement for those students in special education. So that's a start.
I'm really happy to hear about the start, and I'm just bringing this to a more public discussion because I really do think we need to think about this and pursue opportunities for partnership. We have some large donor, donors that can help us in this community. We also have some significant philanthropic foundations, and I, I just think it is a huge issue if we want to pursue equity in our teacher corps, but also to start to address teacher shortage that is going to eventually hit our community as well.
Yeah, agreed.
And just in close, I want to thank... And just in close, I want to thank Liz and her team for just excellent job. I cannot imagine how many hours you put into this. Thank you for your good work. And the Finance Committee, I've served on it before, it's a lot of work. And it's hard to balance these needs, one over the other. So I just really appreciate that work.
Okay, I have Bob next, then Annie, and then Lanny.
Yes, I have a question about the budget impact of those 196 students we think might not come if they were to come, and they won't stay the same. What would that be, the impact on the budget as far as revenue and the expenses?
I'm going to let Kim come up with a rough number of state aid for 196 students. And we'll get that answer shortly.
Yeah. So my assumption is, yes, they have some variable costs by bringing them in. However, we also benefit through state aid because of that. So I'm guessing it more than offsets the expenses.
Yes, I mean, you would assume they would blend into our existing structure. You could have a new teacher here or there, based on if there's pockets of enrollment. But we'll answer what is essentially the state aid impact of roughly 200 students and get that number shortly. I know.
Want to wait to get your answer? I'll go to Annie.
Whenever it works.
I can give a rough number now.
She's fast.
It's a rough number, but it's around 1.8 million.
Okay, yeah, it's good. Thanks.
Oh, good. Thank you. Annie?
I just have a question on the startup removal number. Because we go through all these numbers that we need to start up. And then, it's on, I have slide 30. So if we need the money to start up, then how are we having 2.3 the removal? And then, my other question is, if part of it is for our teacher workshops that were to happen in the summer, did those happen? Did they, if I'm reading that correctly?
So let's start with startup removal. And then, I'll have Dr. Larson weigh in on the plans for teacher workshops. This is just how transactionally we budget. So yes, you could net these against something else and not even display it. You know, you could have had basically a swap from the Northwest startup of 1.9 million to Standing Bear. But then, you wouldn't have been presenting, you could have just changed the name. But then, you wouldn't have been presenting Standing Bear. So this is just how transactionally we budget, from items in, items out. So we could have netted them together and not presented them, you know, this way. But historically, Lincoln has been very line-item transactional. So the reality is, everything's budgeted based off a location and the function for that location. So we would remove the big equipment account line that was assigned to Northwest, because all that equipment was bought this year, it's being delivered, it's being installed. So that would become reduced. And then, over in Standing Bear, we would be increasing that equipment line. So it's more transactional than it would maybe need to be. But historically, that's how Lincoln has done it.
But it doesn't show that we are over-budgeting to start the new schools. It's just the process and way it happens?
Right. So the Northwest money was spent, the 1.9 million was spent on those one-time purchases to equip the new school. So we don't have to turn around and buy those again. We bought sewing machines or whatever out of that funding, and that is now there. And so, it's not an overspending, it's a, this was a one-time cost. And so, we get to remove it from the future year budget.
Gotcha, yes. And about the workshops?
So workshop is a title that catches a lot of things. It's essentially teacher time. So Cedric Cooper, the principal at Northwest, is bringing his staff together for a variety of meetings over the summers. They build their culture, work together, move into their classrooms. All of that requires that we compensate teachers at our workshop rate hour. So part of it's going to that. Some of it is for additional summertime. So the counselors are working to register students, get things set up, so they have additional days that we're paying that come out of that label of workshop. Department chairs have more time, so they can organize and work on their department schedules and supplies and all of those sorts of things. So it's really compensating teachers and other professional staff at Northwest for the time it takes them to get set up and organized to open a brand-new building and do all the things associated with that.
So why is there a, am I reading this correctly on this? That this is a, is 106,000 not used or not needed?
It's being used right now as we speak.
So it is being used?
It's being used right now as we speak. But then, next summer, they will not have all that planning. So it's no longer needed in the future year. So everything on this slide is a one-time thing. And so, we only had to put it in the budget for 20, whatever year we're currently in, 2021, 2022. And we're able to take it out of the budget for 2022, 2023, because the work is done.
So this leads me to, I appreciate the clarity you put in this, because for many of us who don't look at these huge numbers, this looks like, did you, is this an over, how do you read this kind of a slide? Because to me, it's like, was that an over-budget, is this money back? Versus, now I hear what you're saying, it is spent and not going forward into the next budget.
Correct.
Got you. Thank you. Appreciate the clarity. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Lanny?
If it helps, every one-time expenditure would look like that. You'd see it in one year, and then, the next year, you'd see it taken out, regardless of what it was for, as long as it's a one-time expenditure. Just a couple of comments I wanted to make. One, as a thank you to Kathy Danic for her leadership on the bowling and girls wrestling issue. I know that was something important as we went through the Finance Committee work that we identified that we can afford to pay for that. A next, one of the many next steps on that would be a policy change coming out of student learning in Policy 6700, which basically lists out the activities and athletics. I think we're looking at doing that sometime this fall. Dr. Neal and I have talked a little bit, and everything's basically on track for that to happen. So that's, when you next see that, that's not because we're deciding whether or not we want to do it. It's because we need to catch the policy up to the budget. And then, on the budget itself, the focus of the budget is, as it should be, on teaching and learning. And we know over the last couple of years that the impact of the pandemic has increased student need. And so, I just want to express my appreciation that as we recognize that increased need results in an increased workload, that to be fair to our staff, we need to increase staffing. It's not fair to ask our current staff to continue to go in a pandemic mode year after year after year, because we do know that this impact is something that will be with our students and with our staff for several years. And so, as we look at what we're going to need to do going forward, it's really important that we continue to provide the staff that we need to have and increase those staffing numbers, basically, so that our staffing reflects the needs that our students have. I believe this budget makes a good start at doing that. I just wanted to express my appreciation for that and my support for continuing to support our students as we go forward.
Thanks, Lanny. Don, who else?
Recognizing that we're going to have to reset soon for the regular board meeting, I'll be brief, but there were a couple of things that I wanted to point to. Serving on the Finance Committee, most of my questions have been resolved during committee meetings. But there are a couple of comments that I'd like to make. As I'm not sure that Dr. Standish and her staff are getting the credit they deserve for some of the challenges that they've had to deal with. One of those is inflation. And if your entire budget for everything we do is $100, the next year, to do everything the same, no new kids, no new hires, no new programs, it's going to cost more than that, maybe $102 or $103, just because of regular inflation. So if you want to keep your budget flat, like we've done the last couple of years, that requires making cuts to keep you flat. On top of that, when you deal, as Mr. Boswell described, with increased needs due to the pandemic, but then also the way that inflation has just been nuts over the last couple of years. As a small business owner, we have had, for the restaurant, food costs going up some 50% on some things in the last six months. For the mom and pops, those kinds of increases are nearly overwhelming. And in the face of increased needs with the pandemic, opening new schools, and then dealing with the way that the economy is right now, I think that Dr. Standish and her staff have done an incredible job of providing us with a responsible budget that prioritizes the needs of our kids. One more thing, and I know that people are probably getting tired of hearing me say this, but I think it's so important, if we could flip to slide 43, please. And again, just my, it seems lately, my annual concern or complaint about state aid. And look at where we're at the last three years. And we are still not to where we were seven years ago. And yep, we got that nice bump in 2018. And then, it plummets, and then, it plummets again. And we just, we find ourselves behind. So on top of all the other pressures that we talked about, then to have our state aid reduced this much, to have it be this unpredictable, I think that this is a huge problem, not just for us, but for many districts across the state. And it's something that the legislature is simply going to have to prioritize at some point to give us a sustainable, predictable funding mechanism through the state aid formula. But if you want to understand one of our biggest challenges, I think that this slide shows it well. And with that, I would again say thank you to Dr. Standish and her team for giving us this budget, and I will happily support it.
Wonderful. Any further questions? Very good. I do not have a request for closed session, and so, we are adjourned.